Hello, everybody, and welcome to another episode of the Independent Podcast. My name is Fernando Garcia and I am here with Mandy Hadwick, who is running for San Diego City Council, District 2. Mandy, thank you so much for joining us. You know, as somebody who has ran for political office myself, I'm around a lot of people who talk politics, who are very interested in politics. But there are very few people who actually make the decision to put their name on the ballot, do all the paperwork and get out there and be part of the fight. Let me ask you, what is it about you that made you make that decision to go out there and put your name on the ballot and put yourself out there and go run?
Well, you know, honestly, because we need change, you know? What have we been doing at City Hall? It's not working. I mean, look around. I mean, we've got a budget deficit. We've got neighborhoods being left behind. We have a budget crisis. People are losing trust in the people that we've elected to represent our communities and to support them. And I don't think we need more of the same old, same old. We need someone who's going to have a different perspective. And we need fresh leadership when it comes to city council, new perspectives, and someone who isn't afraid of challenging the status quo. I'm not running for a career to build a political portfolio. I'm running to be accountable to my community, period. You know, we've spent years doing the work without a title. You know, I love stepping up now because I feel like it's so needed. And it's really just the natural next step when it comes to my leadership, not just for me, but for all of my community.
Nice. And tell me a little bit about District 2. So if I'm somebody who's new to San Diego, where is District 2? If I was to ask you, where is that? What would that encompass?
Well, the neighborhood of District 2 consists of all of the peninsula, Point Loma, where I live, Ocean Beach, the Midway District. We cover the Old Town portion. There is the Business District. There's a few residents that live there. And we also have all of Claremont and we have all of Mission Beach. That's District 2. We're a coastal community.
Right. And you know, there's, well, actually, before I ask this question, tell me a little bit about yourself, like where you grew up, what, were there people or places or things you experienced that influenced you to say, you know, one day I may actually run for, you know, for political office one day? Or, you know, what were those things that planted those seeds in you as you're growing up that got you to this point? Is there anything out there?
There is, you know, absolutely. So I'm a mom of two teenagers. I'm a Navy wife. That's what got us to California. My husband is a disabled combat veteran. And we've lived in San Diego for several years now. I'm raising my family here. It's a privilege to call San Diego home. And after being a military family, to be able to finally put roots down in a community as beautiful as San Diego. So although, and as well, something that people may not know about me is I'm also indigenous. I'm a registered member of my tribe in Canada, the First Nations. And so I really didn't think that politics was for me. Because as a survivor of child marriage, I went to, you know, I went through a lot of really difficult and powerless experiences at the hands of my parents. And it was my community that saved me from that. And I'm indebted to them because of that. They gave me the resources to help get out of that abusive situation. And we can talk more about this later, but I've always been about service. And right now I serve on the Community Planning Group in Point Loma, the Peninsula Community Planning Board. I am a Rotarian. I'm also a member of the Rady Children's Auxiliary that helps raise money for families of children who are experiencing cancer. And so I'm all about my community in a variety of different ways. And again, looking to want to fix things and realize that the system often isn't set up for us to, to win as regular people. And so that's why I'm running. I want to be someone who's going to show up and get things done around here.
Yeah, that's awesome. And you know what? We need more people who are more community centered, you know? Now, you talk a lot of, you know, what I heard a lot is about the coastal community. What, and you being part of like, I believe you said, the community within that area. What is it? What are some of the things that are unique to District 2 and your community, in the community there? What are some things that are important to the people in your district?
Well, one being a beach community. We're a coastal community. We're on the front lines of the environmental crisis. So that's a very big distinction about my community. We're an older community where we've been built out. And we have quite a bit of people that live in our neighborhoods. You know, we've got a lot of military people that live and come to serve in our neighborhoods. And I think one of the things that I love about our community is just again, the cheapest thing that you can do is go to the beach and, you know, have a burrito and catch some rays, right? And so that's what I think really highlights the beauty of my community. And being a coastal region, we do need to, you know, keep in mind that the environmental conditions and make sure that we're doing our part.
Right, absolutely. And I know, you know, one of the, specifically in the cultural communities, but really in all of San Diego, one of the issues that you kind of touched on a little bit is development and housing. What are your issues? Like what, how, if I was to come to you as a resident and say, hey, you know, how do you stand on development and housing? What would be your response to that?
Well, I think right now we do need housing and we really need to build the housing that our community needs. And I think that's the frustrating part about development. You know, my experience on the Community Planning Group, a lot of what we're seeing realized on the backend is market rate housing. It's not the housing that's going to get any homeless person off the street. It's so expensive. Some of these places are looking to charge up to $3,000 for a studio apartment. So it's out of the scale of what even the county vouchers would offer for someone in that, in that position. And so we need to build the housing that's real, you know, that's really affordable and is going to help our communities and help address some of this homelessness issues that we're experiencing in our region. I think the frustrating part is the policies ensuring density right now. It's ensuring growth, but there's no real investment into the local community to, to grow, to grow in a smart way and to make considerations for transit and for, for community members who want to access the coast. You know, the California Constitution talks about every Californian has a right to the coastal community, to the beach, right? Well, if you have a wall of development that's impeding that and you're not providing parking for that new development, we're going to have a hard time trying to find a spot to park our cars down while we're trying to visit the most beautiful thing about our region, our coast.
Absolutely. It sounds, it sounds like you're, you know, and I can see being part of like a Community Planning Group where, do you feel that city council leaves out the voices of the Community Planning Groups? Do you, have you felt that? I know a lot of, I feel like.
You know, I'm the first vice chair. I've been on the, on the planning board for seven years. And we are an extension of the city of San Diego. We give land use inputs when it comes to development, traffic safety, traffic infrastructure, parks, environment and long range planning, right? Well, the city a few years ago had what's called the Community Planning Group Reform. And what they were trying to do was to help change the, who was representing those communities. And in my opinion, Community Planning Groups are the subject, those volunteers are the subject matter experts of their community. They know where the bodies are buried. They know where the issues are. You'll get, you know, they'll tell you where the issues are. And what happened is that the city, you know, the narrative was that old, rich, white men are the only ones that are on these boards and that they're not reflective of the community that they're representing. And I disagree with that. I believe they use that to actively disenfranchise the community. Because a lot of times it's the Community Planning Board that gets the first dose of the pitchforks when it comes to the community and their concerns with development. They comes, you know, with their sharpened pitchforks and, and they're frustrated because of the lack of responsiveness when it comes to development in our communities.
Yeah, and how do you feel about, you know, you know, I'm going to kind of stick on this issue a little bit about, you know, the bonus ADU, you know, where, you know, people want to tear down single family residence and put up, you know, eight, nine, 10 units? Is that something you're for or against? Or what are your thoughts on that?
You know, I am in favor of smart growth and for, you know, sustainable growth. And so I hear you're a big fan of Neighbors for a Better San Diego, right?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Is that yes or no?
Yes, yes, yes.
And so I believe they do a really good job educating the community on the issues and what policy interpretive, you know, of what the policy really is and the impact and the potential impacts to the community. And so some of those things, when it comes to, I apologize, I'm sorry. I kind of had a moment, a little brain fart. What was the question?
About the, the.
Bonus ADU.
No worries.
Um, so the system feels disconnected right now. And I hear folks say all the time, you know, like, we need election reform. And I completely agree. And we need more transparency. We need more fairness and more community involvement and on how things are decided. And so I really would like to see real election reform, real homelessness solutions, better environmental policy, safe community streets and more truly affordable housing and a more responsive city council. The issue with the bonus ADUs is that again, the city is saying that we want to invest in apartments in someone else's backyard to meet our housing goals. The problem with it is that, back to the affordability, these units are about 600, if they're under, if they're built under a certain square footage, they don't pay the development impact fee. That goes into reinvesting into that community. We're in a budget crisis again. Why are we allowing people to develop in our communities without the proper investments? And so I am not supportive of the bonus ADU program. I feel very strongly and was very much in alignment with Neighbor for a Better San Diego and their position with reverting back to the state policy when it comes to the ADU program. I think, you know, when you have a couple ADUs, you know, you're trying to find housing for multi-generational, you know, family members in your house, whether it's for grandma or for your college kids. They've come home, they can't find an apartment nearby. I am in full support of ADUs when, when they are within the scale of the state program. I, I don't think that many apartment complexes and the scale of some of these ADUs that have shown up in neighborhoods is not what our community needs to, to address our housing crisis.
And you know, when you talk about, you know, I know the environment's very important to you. Are there any things that you feel San Diego, San Diego can do better in regards to protecting our environment or promoting the environment? Is there anything that you would like to discuss in regards to that?
Yes, you know, several, we have a climate action plan, right? And we have a lofty set of goals that are on a great, you know, it's a great plan. And it's got a lot of great ideas in it. The problem with it is not until a few years ago, when the city got sued over this, were they legally even required to adequately fund or to align their, their goals with these goals in the Climate Action Plan? And so with that lack of funding, all it is is just a nice little list of goals that we want to achieve. But no one, if there's no accountability on that, we're going to have some real issues. The one concern that I have with the Climate Action Plan is a lot of times this is in a real world, like in a perfect world situation. And I think that's the danger. We need to look at how are we going to prioritize the investments when it comes to environmental mitigation to make our communities more resilient? I think we need to really look at how we are going to prioritize the, the funding of our environmental goals. What takes precedence? Is it trees? Is it, you know, is it wetlands? Is it land? You know, where are we going to put the money to make sure that our communities can be resilient with the inevitable, sorry, inevitable climate change here?
In, um, you know, and I don't know if you're, if you're familiar with some of the issues where there's Power San Diego that wants to take over, in essence, in the city of San Diego and have our own municipal utility company? Or if you're familiar with that, or is that something that you feel would help the environment and help the citizens with lower rates? Or is that something that is not on your maybe top priority, I would say?
It is a higher priority. I'm absolutely in support of public power and the ability for us to take back the franchise from SDG&E. We watch our city council basically subsidize billionaires and companies on the stock, that are in the stock market. And they've done it on the backs of their constituency to guarantee a profit. You know, I know we don't have extreme weather here, but again, I'm hearing of elderly people who are taking cold showers. They don't even use their water heater because they can't afford the utility rates. That is the issue here in our communities, affordability. And when it comes to utilities, we need to break up with SDG&E.
And I agree with that. Well, you know, there's a lot of, you know, with the budget crisis, you know, that's a huge, you know, thing that they're facing right now. You know, there's always talk about, you always kind of have a camp of people that want to raise taxes here and there, whatever, however they want to do it. Are you somebody that's in favor of an increase, maybe for example, sales tax? Or what some might call a mansion tax on, you know, homes that are being sold at a certain amount? I mean, there's all these different ways that people want to increase it. Is that something that, you know, you feel strongly about or have an opinion on? I'd love to hear your, how you feel about that.
I definitely want to study and do a thorough research before promoting any increase of taxes. You know, as I said, it's kind of like your gas bill's gone up, your utility bill's gone up, your water bill's going up. Now we've got a trash fee that's coming in into play along with these skyrocketing rents that people can't keep, you know, keep, keep up with. And so I think if there were a situation where we would need to add a tax, I think we need to look at, again, who is the populous, you know, the population that's going to be impacted? We've seen with the budget crisis that the city has found very strategic ways to find some money. And I don't think it should be at the cost of potentially squeezing the constituents for that, for that money that they're trying to find. I believe with, if there were an opportunity for us to raise taxes, I'd like it to look at potentially a vacancy tax. We could look at the visitors that are coming to San Diego. I mean, we've got, maybe we can add some more taxes to the short term vacation rentals that are taking up a heated inventory, right? Maybe there's opportunity to fund that there. But I, if there were any tax increase, it would have to be for a specific item. You know, I think the city has unfortunately set a precedent of asking for blank checks and mismanaging money. And so if there were a tax increase, I'd like to look at other groups, like a vacancy tax, you know, a short term vacation rental tax before I ask the city constituency to fund a tax increase.
Absolutely. And just so my audience and people can understand, how would you describe, and obviously that could be, it could end up a little different, but how would you describe a vacancy tax? Like what would that fundamentally look like? If you don't mind explaining what that is?
Sure. Vacancy tax, I think we need to look in the event, for example, like a short term vacation rental. If that platform are on the market, you know, the summer, right? We've got a lot of visitors during the summer. Maybe after a certain threshold of days, you know, then that would enact a tax of some sort for those platforms that don't have residents living in them. And so I think again, it would be situational based on, okay, how many days are vacant? In the, in the instance with the short term vacation rental, I think once it is, you know, say we were to enact a vacancy tax, then at some point we would then want to look at, sorry, looking at expanding that to the platforms, you know, of some sort for them to pay a tax. We, I don't know if we have this too much here in San Diego. I know, you know, in other states they have what's called like snowbirds. You know, we have people that come out here for the summer, come out here for the winter. Maybe the homes that they're in, they, they only live part time throughout the year. Again, those would potentially be platforms that we could apply a vacancy tax to help fund some of the homelessness and housing issues that we're experiencing in our region.
Yeah, I've always thought a vacant land tax would be good to kind of force the hand of developers to say, hey, if there's vacant land, you know, hey, you need to do something with it, you know? Because a lot of them will just sit on it with the hopes of it appreciating. So I've always thought, you know, some form of, of a vacancy tax or vacant land tax would work well. Not, not that we have a lot of vacant land, but hey, the ones we do, you know? You know, but, you know, it's the term, you know, go to the, go to the bathroom or get off the pot. You know, I'm going to say it this way.
Very politically correct.
Very politically. Now, um, you know, tell me about, you know, I know that, you know, you're a wife, you're a mother, you know, you, you have a family. What are some of the things that are outside of the political realm? Like what are your hobbies? What are things that you like to do outside of talking politics?
Well, I love to cook. I love to spend time with my family and friends as much as possible. I actually love to sing too. I gotta get my, my hair out, you know, my mic chair be out, right? So watch out, you know? We'll be having an American Idol here.
Are you a fan of karaoke or do you like to karaoke?
I definitely am a fan of it. It's a lot of fun. It's, you know, it's fun to watch and it's fun to participate for more reasons than one.
Absolutely. Now you were, you had mentioned before that originally you came from Canada, is that correct?
Sorry, my, my mother was, I'm a first generation American. My mom is a resident of Canada and that's where my tribe is. I am from Mesa, Arizona.
Oh, wow, okay, nice. Yeah, nice, nice. And then, you know, being specifically being a military wife, that is a huge, how do I say, especially here in San Diego, you know, it's, um, it's a hu, it's a huge challenge, you know? What, what have you experienced, you know? What does a military mean to you here in San Diego? Being somebody who sees it from the, the aspect of a spouse, the deployments? You know, obviously your, your spouse is injured and is on disability. And how do you, how has that shaped you? And how did you think that helps you connect to the big military community we have here in San Diego?
I think being a military spouse and the nomadic life that you kind of adopt when you marry a service member. You know, when I married my husband 19, almost 19 years ago, I always joke, he had me at Tricare. And when we got married, it was quickly realized, you know, that I, one of us was going to have to give up the career and it was me. And so we've lived all over this beautiful country of ours. And so I know of the community when I see it, you know? Because I've never seen anything quite like San Diego. And I know that it's just between the weather, the people, the culture and the food. There's no place like it. There's no place like it. Some of the challenges, you know, moving, I mean, I'm a professional mover at this point. I mean, moving all over, East Coast, West Coast, Midwest. Those challenges, they really teach you to be resilient. And they also teach you, you gotta find your community and when you relocate. And so it's, those are some of the challenges with moving and, and you know, having young kids and not being able to put roots down. That can impact your family, not knowing where the next orders are or when the next deployment's going to be. And you know, the deployments that I have been through, you know, my husband's, one of his deployments, I was pregnant with my first child. So that was an interesting experience. And then, you know, going through a deployment where both my children were of age to know that dad was gone and not having a parent there. And I think the rules of deployment are, if it's going to happen on deployment, it's going to, you know, if it's going to happen, anything's going to happen. And it, it was very challenging at times. But back in 2017, my husband was almost killed to an outpatient sinus surgery. We actually, that was our first round with infectious disease. He acquired bacterial meningitis. And so he was in a coma for almost a week. And they came in, did last rites and we, he woke up not knowing, we didn't know what the, the, the scale and the impact, of the impact of this disability would be. But being a spouse member of someone who has PTSD, who has a brain injury, who's trying to navigate that disability while still being an active military member, it was very challenging. I'm very grateful to the military and to those who supported my husband as he was med boarded out. He left the service at the end of 2019 and was, went through the VA. At that time, that was when he was allowed to start getting services through the TBI clinic at the Veterans Hospital. And so those are some of the challenges that military families experience, you know, moving disconnection from community and family as well as navigating disability with their veteran and the long term, the lifetime impacts of that disability.
Wow. And you know, going across, being somebody who's lived East Coast, Midwest, here on the West Coast now, you've seen a lot of this country and of America. What, what would you say, what, what would you say? If like, if I was somebody from another country, what would you say defines us as Americans? What, what would you say are your, what you've learned traveling across this country that makes you proud to be an American? And what, what do you think's important to our country?
I think right now the most important thing is to have grace and understanding. We've got a lot of challenges when it comes to politics and, you know, political leaders in general. I mean, looking at the national stage right now, we've, we've got a lot of work to do when it comes to showing up for community and as well being willing to have the difficult conversations, willing to talk to the difficult person or the person who's coming in very passionate. You may not agree with them, but I think there's strength in trying to find common ground and be solution oriented. I believe that's the most important thing we can do right now as Americans, really lean into what's different and lean into the other side and find, hey, we may not agree on everything, but I'm not going to diminish you. I'm going to respect you. I'm going to try to be solution oriented. I think it's a strength to see both sides of a, of a perspective. And I don't believe in the left or the right. I believe in San Diego. I believe in America. And I believe that we can get this right. We've been through much worse things. And I believe this is an opportunity for our country to come together and make a, make a government that works for the people. I mean, we, we know that how it doesn't work. We've got the PhD in that, you know? We need to come together and work to build up our country, fortify it and make it a beautiful country that our founders envisioned.
Awesome. If, if I was, you know, finishing up here, what are some, you know, I'm going to leave your information in the, you know, in the description and everything so people can contact you. What are, if you had a closing statement of, hey, this is what separates me. This is what's important to me. This is why I'm running. What would you say? Would you be, your response to that?
My response to that is right now, this isn't about being a Democrat or a Republican. It's about having representation that's going to be responsive to the community that elected them. I think we haven't had, we, I don't think, I know we haven't had representation. I think we haven't had, we, I don't think, I know we haven't had representation these last seven years. And I think the frustration from the community is that a lot of people want to be heard. A lot of, they want to be seen. And when you don't have a responsive leader or someone who's not willing to include the, the hard work or the, the inputs that you've put into crafting a policy, it, it appears that they're not listening when they don't include those inputs or they don't reply back or they're not at the, in the community or they don't have a, a presence with their constituency. And I think that's what people are hungry for. We're tired of the same old, same old. We've had that, done that, got the PhD. We're tired of people lying to us. We need people with principles, with morals, with character that are saying what they're going to do and do it. I mean, that's the, the, the principal part. You can have a doctor, you can have a PhD, but if you don't have any morals or, or character, we're not being served. And so I really feel that that's something that my community is wanting. I, I love my community. I know what it means to serve and sacrifice. And, and I know I'm not going to get it right all the time, but you know what I'm going to be doing? I'm going to be going, talking to my community, telling me what ends their gears. And that's where the policy, sorry, the policy, newbie over here, right? Breaking the mic already. But that's where policy comes from, from that conversation, from leaning into the community. And, and that's what we need. We need, we're tired of having special interests or having people who are trying to extract something from the community or put policy on the backs of the community. We need something that's going to work for all of us and that's what I'm about.
Awesome. Well, Mandy, I really appreciate you coming on the show and telling us your story and talking a bit about us. Where can, people who are interested in learning more about you, is there a website? How can people reach out to you?
Yeah, well, we're a people powered movement and we need all of the community to come together to know that there's a community minded candidate out there wanting to represent D2. So you can find more information about me at mandyhavlick.com. I am always down for meeting my community. Whether you live in D2 or not, I'm always down for visiting a coffee shop. You can call me, my number 619-723-4526. And again, we want to bring the community back to City Hall where it belongs. You can also, oh, forgot the social handles, Mandy Hav, at Mandy Havlick S D. I'm on Instagram and on Facebook. But I'm going to need all the help that I can get from the community. This is a people powered movement and it would be such a privilege to represent D2 at City Hall.
Awesome. Well, Mandy, once again, thank you so much for coming on the show. Everybody out there, make sure you go to our website, check out all the information. And let's get more community focused people into office like Mandy. And once again, Mandy, thank you so much for coming out. Have a great night.
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Always welcome. Thank you.